is complete and the project is ready to move to construction. The buses are anticipated to arrive in the spring of 2026 and be placed in service by the summer. And B C Transit has a team to support our staff in getting them ready for the deployment of the buses. B C Transit was also able to secure grant funding that will be applied to the capital project costs and incremental costs to prepare the buses for deployment. And the further, the initial calculation of the ongoing operating costs associated with the B E Bs is anticipated to cover S C R D's capital cost portion. And jury's still out yet, but there may even result in a small cost savings. At this point, there are no further plans for additional B E Bs until the new operations and maintenance facility can be constructed, which is still several years away. The new yards will be built to support a fully electric fleet. And it should be noted that these two charging stations that are being constructed are on a skid, so they are portable and they can be moved to the new facility when the time comes. So staff are recommending that the committee support entering into an agreement with B C Transit that supports the construction of the charging infrastructure for the deployment of two heavy duty B E Bs. Thank you, and staff are here to answer questions.
Thank you. And okay, we're we as much as possible, people can use the request to speak button in eScribe because it puts us in a level playing field with Director Backs. But I saw a wave from Director Inkster, so do you have a question?
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I was I wasn't in that portion of the agenda yet, so thanks for acknowledging my hand up. The just a question through you to staff. We all we those of us who have electric vehicles know and have been told that the costs, although the costs of the units when we purchase them ourselves are higher than regular vehicles in a lot of cases, we have been told and we those with history know that the maintenance on those vehicles is supposed to be less because of the type of propulsion system is there. So as we move forward to the maintenance plan and construction, obviously that's being taken into account and based on a rollout of a complete replacement of our buses. So just just a confirmation of that, the maintenance piece may change, should change over over the next number of years. Just confirmation of that through you to staff. Thanks.
Staff.
Thank you. And through the chair, yes, those are all part of the contemplations as we look at our three-year operating budget and out into the future as the electrification of the fleet continues to unroll. So those are all being considered, which is they're still testing, right? These are the initial B E Bs that are going to be put into system. Victoria was the first. Those buses were actually deployed back in June. So as as they're they roll out, we get used to them, they're in service, we get to understand how far they can go, how long they can go, all of that will be taken in consideration. And annually, they'll be looking at our three-year budget. So I'll defer to B C Transit. Our government relations manager is here in case he wants to add a little bit to that. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Ringma.
Good morning. Sorry for the technical difficulties this morning. Glad glad to be here. Rob Ringma, I'm the Senior Manager of Government Relations for B C Transit. Happy to be to be here supporting Shelley and staff. So yeah, further to Shelley's comments through the chair, exactly that, we do anticipate that maintenance costs will we will see some decrease. Obviously, with an internal combustion engine, you have thousands of moving parts versus an electric engine, which is, you know, I'd use the term more simplistic. It's kind of funny to say to use that word considering it's a, you know, more advanced technology, but just mechanically, it's more simplistic. So basically, we are going through kind of quote unquote, I would say we've done some piloting with battery electric buses. We've got a pretty good estimation on what those maintenance costs will be, but really over the long term, we'll start to understand and get a better understanding of what those are. But I would say in support of kind of director's comments that the the general consensus is in the battery electric industry is that maintenance costs should see a decrease over time.
That's good to hear. Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, do you have a follow up? Director Inkster?
Always start that realization that it may be me, Chair, but it's actually the system this time. So the question then, as a corollary to the last one, was that obviously there'll be some maintenance changes, but I would ask if there's some safety changes that will go with the new system. I'm assuming there's a change in some safety protocols. I'm just wondering. Thanks.
And who would like to take that one?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start and then certainly Mr. Ringma can chime in. We are very happy and B C Transit has been able to utilize some further grant funding to be able to supply us with an acronym called B O L T, which is Battery Op-- oh, I don't even know what it stands for, but it's a team of B C Transit folks that are working with the nine communities that B E Bs are being deployed in. There's significant changes. There's operating procedures that need to change. There's training. We need to put all our mechanics through training. So we've actually started to have meetings. We're going to be supported the whole way through. Staff will still have lots of work to do because they'll give us templates. We need to sort of customize those to the Sunshine Coast, but there's lots of changes and B C Transit is there to support us the entire way. Mr. Ringma, if you have anything to add? Thank you.
Yeah, I think you covered that off well, Shelley, is that we have a whole department team that is focused on working with our local government partners and particularly here in the S C R D where you're also our operating company, to make sure that all of those kind of procedures, policies are understood. We're supporting our local operating companies to help implement those procedures. And we're just, you know, supporting with kind of our our knowledge and expertise in that field to make sure that when we do move to implementation, that that not only our facility, also the buses and our drivers and all of our passengers are adequately safe.
Thank you very much. Next up, I see Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Just knowing that we've got, you know, battery electric buses, we're only going to have the the two to start with as a as a pilot, but also that we're looking at our own fleet electrification, are there going to be upgrades that are going to be required to the B C Hydro infrastructure, not only to the property, but up Mason Road? Because it's a fairly rural area where the fleet yard is. And I'm wondering if the timelines for B C Hydro have been contemplated because our experience with the dump has been years. So thank you.
Great question. Staff.
Thank you, Chair. So yes, B C Transit's team that's been doing the design has been in communication with B C Hydro and they we are planning for an upgrade that would support the two skids and bring in three F M three-way, three-phase. So that's coming, but it's just going to support those two skids. And then with our own electrification of the fleet, we did have an electrical engineer come in and do an inspection of the yards and what we can support out there. So we we have that in place to support the current E V charging infrastructure that will go in for our corporate fleet. So to be able to electrify the entire B C Transit fleet at Mason Yards is a significant upgrade. And that was part of the initial work that was done last year when we brought forward the report in December. So our transit won't fit on B C on our current Mason Yard site, so we need to move anyways. So we won't bring in the electrical upgrades to the the yards to electrify B C Transit's fleet because we'll do that at the new site. And we won't need that type of power at the yards to just maintain the services that will be there. So we're taking this at an incremental stage, but B C Hydro has been involved in all of the discussions and are ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And and I have a question. There has been some attention paid to the fact that electric buses are heavier than our diesel buses. This doesn't worry me unduly, given how heavy logging trucks are, and they go up and down our highway all the time, but we have sinkholes in our bus yard. So hopefully, we will not lose any B E Bs into sinkholes.
Thank you, Chair. Originally, when B C Transit was specing out their B E B product, we were they were looking at a heavier product, but that has since changed. And the they're going with the supplier of actually our current fleet. So there won't be that extra weight that we were originally anticipating. Now, that being said, yes, we do have some soft spots in the yard. So that's another project. There's lots going on in the yards, but that is another project that we are currently looking at with the intention of where the buses are being parked is the area that we need to remediate as well, and so that would be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see. Ah, okay, Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. Along the same lines about the impacts of electrification, it's sort of a wider comment and question to transit. More and more of our infrastructure is electrifying. Also, the push for community building increases our reliance on hydro. Is there a communication strategy with hydro in general to make sure that not only the Sunshine Coast, but other transit hubs are fully supported with the right kind of electrical growth planning, those kinds of things? Because I know there's a couple of communities that are dealing with brownouts now as they move towards heavier electrification reliance.
That sounds like a Mr. Ringma question.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director Stafford, for the question through the chair. Yes, so if you remember me presenting previously on this, the B C Transit's low-carbon fleet program is a direct derivative of the provincial B C Clean Plan. So we're aligned to the provincial government in terms of some of their objectives in terms of G H G reductions. So that overall alignment, there's clearly communications happening with the largest supplier of electricity in the province, which is B C Hydro. So I can say from a B C Transit perspective, we're obviously heavily engaged with them sharing our plans and rollout because it is it's a significant it's a significant draw on the electrical grid as we've learned with these deployments, upgrading to three-phase power, all of these different pieces that we've gone through. So yes, we are in constant communication with both the province and B C Hydro on on these on these projects. And I have to assume that from a provincial level, there's the larger conversation just about electrification, not just of B C Transit's fleet, but also of residential, you know, use vehicles, commercial vehicles, all of those pieces. But I think, Director, you bring up a good point, which is, you know, this is a big draw on the grid and we need the infrastructure, electoral infrastructure behind it to support.
Thank you. Director Gabius? Ah, and then next after that, we'll go to Director Backs.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is a very exciting and positive development here on the Sunshine Coast. I'm excited to see this pilot program go ahead and we'll be looking out for those B E Bs in Victoria in a couple of weeks and maybe ask some questions to the directors over there, see how that's going. Great opportunity to lower greenhouse gas emissions and also maybe lower costs potentially, which is very exciting. So I on that, I will move the recommendations that are on page three of the agenda.
And is there a second or? I see a second or. Thank you, and I'm going to go to Director Backs.
Excuse me. Thank you. I wanted to make sure that the Bolt team knows that I'd asked that the Bolt team arrange for some training for our local fire departments. I've done some training on electric vehicles and how how the fire departments can deal with them in an emergency situation. And so I recommend that I know how long things take to happen. So I recommend that Mr. Ringma be aware that the fire departments will be very interested in seeing where the main shut off is for these high voltage vehicles. And I encourage them to get in touch with all the pertinent fire departments and and make sure that we arrange that for safety's sake.
Okay, thank you. Another question? Good comment. I see nobody in the virtual queue. I see no one waving at me, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. And we will go on to more transit. This is transit, new transit and fleet operations and maintenance facility planning. And just a note that if this is also fleet operations, should not Area A be voting? Corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair. Staff would like to request a short recess if we could.
Certainly. Okay, recessed. Some little technical excitement this morning. And we're live and we're on the screen and everything, so this is really good. Okay, let us move to item 4.2 on our agenda, which is Transit Infrastructure, New Transit and Fleet Operations and Maintenance Facility Planning. And over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So further to the report that staff brought in December of last year, to progress the planning for a new transit and fleet operations and maintenance facilities, step one is to identify a suitable site. So subject to both parties securing funding through our budgeting process, S C R D and B C Transit would like to work collaboratively to advance this work, identifying potential sites, conducting a site analysis, and bringing back information to the board when appropriate. So the information is in your report and the staff recommendation is to continue to progress this work, and we're here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to note that the recommendations that are on page seven, we are only going to look at recommendations number one and number four. Two and three will be brought forward at a future occasion. So questions? Wow, everybody's quiet. Not seeing any questions. All right, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. No questions. I think this is important, want to continue to see it moving forward. So I'll move recommendations one and four as presented.
And a second or that seconded? Thank you. Last chance for any further questions or comments. All right, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Director Backs, and that passes. All right, thank you. We will move on to item 4.3, which is Transit Expansion Infrastructure Implementation Plan. And over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So another report related to planning for infrastructure that supports transit services and expansion priorities, specifically this time on on-street infrastructure such as bus stops and the road infrastructure itself. The next two years, well, next three years of transit improvement priorities includes modifications throughout one, introduction of Route Five and bidirectional service for Route Two, all of which have corresponding infrastructure needs. So B C Transit and S C R D are again proposing to work collaboratively and this time engaging the local road authorities who actually have authority over the roads that we need some infrastructure on, to review and agree upon proposed bus stops and on-street infrastructure so that these expansions and plannings can be put into their planning processes, whether that's opportunities through development or through their own capital planning. So I feel like we're a few years behind, but I have been assured by our B C Transit rep that it's common, infrastructure is kind of the lonely cousin that seems to be forgotten about sometimes, but we need to get caught up in our planning and start planning for the future as well. So as noted in the report, the planning specific to on-street infrastructure, it does not include the bus shelters themselves. This is about the infrastructure to support the bus stop. Staff are here to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So when you say the infrastructure, you mean like the pullout lane is what we're talking about?
That is correct, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to see this report and see that we are looking at how we're moving transit into the future. And I'm wondering, how does this fit into our official community plan process? How do community members provide impact input? I've had some interest in in the neighborhoods in West House Sound as what is the process for potential expansion? If there is no current service at the moment, how does expansion get considered for planning down the down the road? Thank you.
Staff, please.
Thank you, Chair. So certainly through the O C P process of not only the S C R D's, but also the Town of Gibson's and the Districts of Seashells, we have involved our senior planner from B C Transit to be able to provide feedback in things like transportation master plans as well. So we've we're making those connections, we're meeting with our the planning staff from all the jurisdictions on an ongoing basis. From a transit expansion perspective, we need to we know that we need to do another Transit Future Action Plan, and that has been identified for 2027, I believe. And so that is the time that we would be engaging the community on expansion initiatives for transit in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just say, I do get inquiries about bus stops, either the relocation of bus stops, there's a couple of them that people have asked me about, and then bus shelters are an ongoing request. You know, we've been people have been asking for bus shelters around here for at least 15 years. So it's kind of disappointing to see that we're not there yet. However, such is it. I just so if residents have concerns about bus stops, what should they do? Who should they address?
Thank you, Chair. That's a great question, and we've just recently actually worked through one of those requests. So they can either email our general email line for transit, which also then B C Transit gets a copy of. So when we receive that kind of request, we do B C Transit takes a look at it from a safety perspective, regulations perspective, infrastructure perspective. We also have our own staff that go out and do onsite safety checks. And if it's determined that we can move it to a different location that is safe, that doesn't impact the service, because we know that transit is all about seconds and minutes. So depending on where we're relocating the bus stop to, that may or may not have an impact on the service itself. But we recently looked at a relocation of a bus stop on that's currently on Cowery coming up the hill close to Derby, and we look we're looking at relocating that to around the corner actually on Derby, so it's not on the hill, and that will happen in October. So there's a lot of things that have to happen for us to even consider it, but to get it in the queue, it's an email. We do have that on our website on how to send in a question or a comment right on the website. And then both B C Transit and S C R D staff can take a look at it. Then to actually implement the change may take time as well because it depends, again, we're not the as well, because it depends, again, we're not the road authority, so we have to work with the road authority around when we can actually put that stop in, and then we need to align that with schedules. So, it is not a process that happens overnight, it can take many, many months in fact to do that, but there is a process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Ringma?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, I concur with, with everything Ms. Gagnon has said. The one only additional piece I'd mention, and again, it's a little bit complicated in Sunshine Coast when you're not the, when the SCRD is not the road authority, but ultimately it is the local government that has the final say on bus stops and bus stop locations. So, BC Transit tries to provide as much data and analysis and try to find the most efficient routing and, and have the bus stops at the most appropriate places. But, when an issue like this does arise, we work collaboratively with the SCRD and any of the other local municipal partners or potentially the ministry. And ultimately, it is the local government that makes the final decision on those final bus stop locations. So, so you definitely have some input into that process.
Thank you very much. Director Ingster.
GM Gagnon sort of triggered a question for me. The bus stop change at, in what I call basically West Seashell now, is it going towards West Seashell or coming back from West Seashell? I'm assuming it's going towards, and so is that bus stop change off the hill also to service Trellis a little better? Is that what that is potentially all about? There's also a planned development that's supposed to go in there, so it's good that we meet, meet numbers of people accessing the buses, so just asking about that Chair, thanks.
Staff?
Thank you, and thank you for the question. It's actually an opportunity to talk about when we don't plan, what happens, when we're, we're not working together, what happens, because that's a great example. The, the significant building that went up on the top of Cowry and Derby, the Trellis as you refer to it, we, there was no consultation during the development process that was missed, and so there was feedback that we could have provided at the time. The good news is, we have great communications now, we're getting lots of referrals, our senior planner's been able to meet with planning staff in the other jurisdictions, and that has improved significantly over the past year and a half. But, so the bus stop that was currently servicing coming up the hill on Cowry to turn left onto Derby, so that's the direction that the bus is headed, it was, the current bus stop is coming up the hill, so that is a challenge from an accessibility perspective, especially for those residents at the Trellis. So, we are moving it to just around the corner, have worked with the District of Seashells around where to move it and BC Transit, just around the corner on Derby. Again, not an ideal place because there's no pullout, however, it's better from an accessibility perspective, it's not very far away, so it's something that we can do. And then, again, the District of Seashells, that gets it on their radar for when development does occur, or there's capital planning in that area, then we can look at fully accessible, making that an accessible stop at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are getting toward the recommendations, and I'm going to note that staff have struck recommendations number two and four. So, we are now looking at recommendations one, three, and five on page 21 of our agenda. Is anybody, does anyone have an appetite to move these recommendations? I see a motion, I see a seconder. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm calling the question on recommendations one, three, and five. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes, thank you very much. Next item, we are leaving transit and going into recreation, so item 4.4, well, water recreation, Sunshine Coast Arena Well Investigation Project, and over to staff.
Thank you Chair. Staff were pleased to provide an update on the Sunshine Coast Arena Well Investigation Project. The report summarizes the results of the investigation of the decommissioned well at the SEA and lays out the requirements to reactivate the well with an order of magnitude cost estimate. Two options have been provided for your consideration, and staff are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And are there questions? Director Ingster.
Okay, I was, I'm buying some time for Chair Toth over here. So, Chair through you to staff, this is on the well project. So, obviously, they presented that we need to be wise with our, how we spend our money, and do, do the projects that make the most sense. And, and this board asked for, to look at an old well, and, which is, I think, wise considering that the water is normally, mostly not potable that's used in that situation. I would say, I, I think we need to focus on our larger projects that, for us, and, and I'm okay with the recommendation, but I would just say to the board, my hope is that in that area, we've, we are able one day to create enough potable water to not only service the arena, but also to service the fields and the golf course without using treated water. And that's what's going on in that situation, and it's, it's frustrating for me, and I asked our staff at the DOS to look at, and, and Chair Toth was there with me, look at water coming out of the park area, well up there potentially, and I'm assuming they work with the SCRD staff on that idea. And I'm, I, like a lot of other things that I think we need to do in local government, I'm going to keep talking about it, so that it doesn't go off our radar, because we need to find ways to use, to not, to use non-potable or don't treat water to use on some of those, in, in situations where we use a lot of water for wreck situations, but, but we didn't, we need, we need the other water for drinking and firefighting. So, I just, just think we need to put a plan together and/or have those ideas in our back pocket so that we use, we use proper water for proper situations. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. And I'm going to take a slightly different tack on this. We didn't talk about this ahead of time, which now I'm realizing was a mistake, but given the lead time for provincial approvals and, you know, permitting and what have you, I actually think it would be prudent for us to continue with the Phase One work. It's mentioned in here that, you know, it's over 175 days, it's just over 14,000 liters a day. Over the season, that's two and a half million liters of water. And so, obviously, we want to get to a point where we're not going beyond, you know, stage two watering restrictions or what have you. But, when we ask our residents to find other sources of water to, you know, irrigate their gardens, or wash their cars, or whatever it is that we're asking, I think it sort of behooves us to also look at other options. And what I see is that the construction and commissioning might be a big project, it might be an expensive project. We don't know if there's grants available for that work at this time. But, what I'm seeing in here is that, you know, to sort of finish Phase One, might only be $20,000. And so, I think from that perspective, I would actually be interested in moving option two, the recommendation that's most of the way down, page four of the staff report. But, I want to hear what the other directors have to say about it. Thanks.
I also was thinking that perhaps we would be better off to have a water license in our back pocket, so that if, you know, situation changes in the future, then we, we are able to move quickly and respond, rather than have to get in a queue that could go a lot longer than two years based on our previous experience. Director White.
Yeah, I have to do my usual here and ask if I can actually vote on this, because it says I can on the agenda, but I believe this would be regional water, taking these next, next steps.
And over to Corporate Officer.
The voting is Recreation Programming, so that's why Gibson's is in the vote.
Okay, so if we were taking next steps on water provision to the regional water system, Recreation's going to pay for it.
Not to the regional water system, that's just to the arena.
But, but it's, right now, the, the regional water system is supplying water to the arena. This is offsetting.
It's interesting, I was sitting.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for something.
I'll vote for you guys, cut my costs down.
For our studio audience, staff was conferring. Over to staff.
We're going to suggest we have a short recess to discuss a little further.
And we will have a short recess. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we are resuming, and over to staff.
Thank you Chair. So, this is a very distinct service, supplementing the water system or the water supply for that particular facility. It is not connected to our water supply, and so we have several other examples within our park service. For instance, Lyons Field has a well, Cliff Gilker has now just had a, an approval of a well. And so, it isn't supplementing our water supply, it's just supplementing that particular facility or location. It would be very similar to if a resident drilled a well on their property and they held the license for that particular well, and it wasn't connected to our water system, but they also were connected to our water system.
Okay, and if it were at some future time connected into the water system, then that situation would change. Brilliant. Now, hopefully, we all know what we're talking about. Who is in the queue to speak? Director Toth, did you have a follow-up?
Basically, a follow-up Chair, thank you. I'm amenable, I mean, this is just a recommendation, so I'm amenable that this is voting all directors, because it's going to have an impact on everybody. But, you know, the, the recommendation here is that staff present a budget proposal for the activities. So, I am perfectly happy for us to have a discussion or debate about who's going to fund this work when we get to budget. I mean, the total dollars here is $20,000, so I'm not overly concerned, but I'm perfectly happy to have that debate over who's paying for it at budget. Thank you.
Okay, at present, we do not yet have a motion on the floor. Director Gabius, you haven't spoken so far.
Thanks Chair, I appreciate the points that were made just now. I'm wondering what the impacts on staff capacity would be. I know this is a fairly inexpensive project, but there's lots of projects on the books, staff is really busy, and so that, to me, it would be a consideration, whether the timing is right this coming year, or whether this is something that we should consider in the future.
Thank you. Over to staff.
Thank you Chair. So, of course, staff is here to do the will of the board. So, there would be staff time involved, we would need to get a service agreement with the DOS first of all, then we'd need to start working with the nation as well. So, it isn't just as simple as submitting an application. But, that being said, if this is a priority to the board, then it would become part of the work plan, and that would then need to be considered along with everything else that's coming forward in the 2026 budget proposal and/or carryforwards. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. Director Ingster, you're in the queue, is that residual? Okay.
So, I'm glad it's coming back, because then you don't have to hear as much from me in the future on this. This is a, in my mind, redundancy that we talk about, and I know that Director Lee likes, likes that word. And, to do wells is a form of, form of redundancy, so I think we should be looking at these, like I said, for non-potable water. And, in, in terms of the staff time, the $20,000 is an indication of, in my mind, of less staff time just by, based on the price tag. And, we need to consider with this board and what we've discussed, that water is probably our single most important challenge and topic this term. So, I think we should really be including this in budget and/or moving towards looking at these redundancies to put them under our system. Our use of water will increase, our population's increasing. We need more water options, thanks.
Thank you. Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Director Ingster, very concise and to the point and very much on, on topic here, and I appreciate that. I'm going to try it, I'm going to move the recommendation on, near the bottom of page four of the staff report. So, that's option two.
Thank you. And do I see a seconder? I see a seconder. All right. Any other further comments before I call the question? I'm not seeing any further hands, virtual or otherwise, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? I am not seeing any opposed, so that passes. Thank you very much. We are going to move to item 4.5, Ice Season Service Level Increase Impact, and over to staff.
Good morning. Staff are pleased to present this report in response to the board's August recommendation outlining the cost to extend the ice season and operating hours to better meet the growing demand for ice. Staff are happy to answer any questions the community may have. Thank you.
I'm having trouble finding my place. I just had a question, which is that the, in the recommendations, the two weeks of additional ice in the fall at the Sunshine Coast Arena are bundled with the extended hours of operation on Mondays. Are those two options connected? That you, you can only have Mondays if you also have the extra two weeks, or are they separate? Chair, I can answer the question.
Thank you for the question.
Oh, go ahead.
Those could be, yeah, thank you for the question. Those could be considered as separate items if the board wishes to.
Thank you. I would have preferred that it, that the third one had been in subsection C, separate one, but we could still do that. We could, we could make Mondays subsection C. So, I believe I saw a hand, I'm sorry. Director Stanford.
I just have a question of clarification on page two of the report, under revenue potential. I'm not quite sure of the point.
So I'm wondering about the energy usage to put in ice, but I guess you'd be putting it in in late August in the arena, and that is a really hot time of year to be putting it in. And it's also the time of year that we tend to be approaching a crunch in terms of water restrictions. So I'm, yeah, if only we had a well. Right. I just wanted to ask staff is, I mean, I suppose if you throw enough energy at it, it's feasible at any time of year, but is this a good time to be putting ice into our not well insulated arena?
Seeing who's going to be first on the queue here, myself or Manager Van Velsen. Thank you, Chair, for the question. I certainly will defer to Manager Van Velsen if he has a comment after. So you are correct, the Sky, the Sunshine Coast Arena is is a little bit more challenged in warmer weather, but our weather also ebbs and flows. So you are correct, if it's a unseasonably warm time when we're trying to put in ice, it could be a struggle. And so we we may remain, we may have to push those dates out. But at least having the service level in place allows us to proceed if the conditions are such that we feel we can hold ice when we're putting it in.
Are there any other further questions, comments? Yeah, personally, I see no difficulties with additional Monday times. If we have the ice in anyway, and there is an opportunity to make better use of it, then that seems to make a lot of sense to me. But to go forward and put in the ice earlier at the arena, especially when there is a conflict with an overlap with the Aquatic Center annual maintenance closure, I'm just not sure that's a great idea. So is there, oh, look, my queue is heating up. Director Inster.
I'm wondering if the chair just means it's just me that's causing that heat signature. Okay, there's others. The question I would ask through you to staff is, when the proposal came to this board a number of years ago for the junior hockey team to come to the Sunshine Coast, I had indicated that we have to get our heads around what that means. And I'm assuming that staff was obviously, not only because of their background of professionalism, hearing the board and saying that and looking at other examples of junior hockey teams as a sort of a warning to this board as to what we'll expect in changes and costs. And so we're hearing that now that the hockey team needs an earlier time, and I get that. If you've ever lived in a hockey community, teams need to start practicing like other teams. So in saying that, I'm asking if staff sees this as typical. I'm assuming the answer is yes, and what they foresee as the next request. We're going to get a number of requests that are connected to the junior hockey team over the next number of years that may have an effect on our main new good facility. Thanks.
GM Ganyan.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So year round ice would be a challenge from not only our climate's perspective, but also it's really hard on a facility to have year round ice. And you don't see it very often from a the provision of community ice, more professional ice, potential is a little bit different. So we always would like a shutdown period. It's important to have that. It's important to do due diligence, preventative maintenance, et cetera, on your plans. So the extension of ice any further, I'm not sure if junior hockey wants to pull it further into the spring because then it's it's really not about their their competition season, it's over. It would be around revenue generation from camps, the provision of skill development type of opportunities. I would suggest that the skate club would love to see more ice because their competition season does go into the late spring, actually, late July. So if you look around the, you know, different areas, when you have four or five or six sheets of ice, you can do a staggered type of when ice is available, when it's closed, so that you can have that provision at different times of the year. For the Sunshine Coast, we have two sheets of ice, one of which isn't, you know, it isn't great from an insulation perspective, perhaps, if we start looking at, and when we get to the point where we're looking at a new facility, you know, we would construct it differently. I personally, the other challenge with the way that we offer our services from an operations perspective is that our operations staff does our shutdowns on our other facilities as well. So it would mean a different way of delivering services should we extend our ice season even further. But my suggestion would be that from looking at our user groups, looking at when their competition season is, when they're gearing up, I feel like this is, we're getting to a point where this is a good a good mix, you know, September to mid-March at the Sunshine Coast, and in August to end of May at the Gibson's Arena, that that seems to be a provision that will meet the needs of most of our user groups. And that includes our dry land user groups as well because we don't have a field house on the Sunshine Coast. So our dry land groups do look to our arenas during the summer for their activities as well. So I'm not, I hope I answered the question with a series of other comments, but again, I'm not anticipating more. I know that this latest ask from junior hockey was, they weren't sure around, they needed to get their feet under them and get their themselves going. And so they weren't sure how much ice they would want in the spring, but they certainly do, from a sustainability perspective, want to be able to offer skill development camps, revenue generation opportunities for themselves as an organization that would feed back into their program, and this would enable that. Thank you.
I have a follow up question, I guess. It made me realize that we keep getting these requests in a sort of a piecemeal way, and we don't have an overall strategy for how we intend to provide ice or not in the future. So it feels like, you know, every year or two, there's a request for another couple of weeks or another day, or, and we don't, we don't have a goal that we're aiming at. And that would be helpful is, is, are we looking, we have a parks review coming up, but what about in terms of recreation services generally?
Well, you do have a recreation facility needs assessment on the books. And so that's, that's all part of that is looking at, you know, what are the needs now, what are the needs in the future, you know, what are the demographics showing in terms of growth? How many sheets of ice do you need for your population of your size? That would be in that assessment, which is scheduled, been deferred to 2026. But I also was remiss to introduce our new recreation manager, Tanya Call, who introduced the report. This is her first meeting. She started with us in February. So once she gets her feet underneath her as well, you know, look forward to launching that project with her in the new year. It's been piecemeal because the other thing is you need to be responsive to groups as well. So that's why we also put that Monday in this, we had the opportunity to slide the Monday in because it was one of those, hey, you know, we really would like to see Monday. So when we get these kind of requests around groups saying, there are times that you're not open, that we now are at a point where we've grown enough, or, you know, we've got more teams coming in, we want more ice, that's when we can actually deliberate, but deliberate it. But so it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a, we respond, but at the same time, our rec facility needs assessment will also help us plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Toth, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I've been struggling with this one because, you know, on the one hand, these are not cheap facilities to operate or keep maintained or or staff. On the other hand, you know, when you look at the chart on page three of the staff report and then the table at the top of page four of the staff report, it seems like from a variable cost perspective, I know this doesn't cover the capital renewal circumstances, but from a variable perspective, it seems to be basically cost recovery. And so really, we are talking about, you know, capital renewal, stress on our operations staff when they've also got other facilities shut downs, they need to do things of that nature. The requests from the groups were both for two weeks at opposite facilities at opposite ends of the schedule. Were their requests all or nothing? Like, could we do a week instead of two? Do an incremental? See if it's actually getting as much uptake as they think it will, as we hope it will, and then reassess it again in another year's time? Or is it, they need two weeks or nothing? Thanks.
Over to staff.
Thank you through the chair. So the motion that accompanies this report is to actually examine or to bring forward a budget proposal. So if you'd like the budget proposal to be expanded to provide options, we can certainly do that at that time. I think the the groups asked because they see their evaluation period in in the fall, two week being a good amount of time for that. And then, of course, you know, there was, in the spring, the same sort of thing, being able to run the camp. So obviously, I suspect the groups would be happy with whatever they can get, but if you'd, if you'd like us to expand the options available in the budget proposal, we can certainly do so. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not, at this point, have a motion on the floor, I should, I should observe. So Director White.
I will move the recommendation. And I mean, I hear variations suggested by different directors, and they can propose amendments if they want, but I think the recommendation's pretty basic and gets us started.
Do I see a second or? Yes, I see a second or. Is there any further comment at this point? I'm not seeing anything. So all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you very much, everyone, and we will move on to the next item, which is Directors' Remuneration Review Task Force. I think I will pass this over to staff, CAO.
Thank you, Chair. So as part of the board's policy, there is a requirement in the policy to have the committee review the terms of reference prior to the subsequent election. And so it's in front of you today as in discussion in your July policy to have it brought forward for further discussion as to what approach we want to take for this particular review for 2026.
Thank you very much. And I just personally am largely happy with where we're at on the remuneration front right now, and I'm not ready for a full scale review, but I think we should do a light review, if that makes sense. And I'm slightly unclear about the options.
I think this was based on some prior discussion with, as part of the Policy Review Committee, and it wasn't in depth. So having that said, that may be why there's not deep clarity in some of the options, was essentially, do we want to actually engage a full committee to review the terms? So even if we do a light review, what approach are we going to take? Is it just going to be a board review, or is it going to be a third party committee that's going to be doing that particular review? So I think getting some guidance from the board as far as what they envision for the committee, because, of course, it's your policy, there is some guidance to the policy, but you, of course, can always amend the direction of your policy. So I think staff are just wanting to understand because if we do do a committee, for example, and even if it's a light review, we may want to put some financial supports for that, even though they might be quite insignificant, but at least we might want to put a budget proposal forward for that. If the board just wants to do a review and identify some areas within the policy, then we could bring the subsequent policy forward. If you want to give some feedback right now on some areas you want to review, so even what does a light review look like? I think we need more clarity.
Well, I'm actually wondering if we could perhaps by email poll the board members to to see if any of the current board members, any of the current directors have concerns about the remuneration as currently offered. And if nobody is concerned, I just, this gets into like somewhat personal issues, and I don't really want to be having this discussion here. Over to Director Toth, you waved at me. Rescue me.
Thank you, Chair. No, it's a good question, and I'm fine if directors wanted to provide, you know, personal feedback to the CAO or myself by email. But we have a tendency to not always reply to our emails when they're sent out. And so I think having this on the public agenda puts it into the public light. You know, we do have a first kick at that can, you know, if somebody or a couple of directors are absolutely adamant that we need to do a full overhaul, I think it's important that we get that out there. If we want to just, you know, tinker with the policies or, you know, tinker with a few things around the edges, that's definitely a different conversation than needing to stand up a full committee with the resources that go along with it. But recognizing that directors are not always responsive in email, I think this is a good opportunity to provide some feedback now. Thanks.
Thank you. It is only four years since our last full on review. Corporate Officer.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to confirm that the board does not conduct business by email, so that anything we discuss around this remuneration review will have to come to a public meeting.
This is true, but Director White. Oh, I beg your pardon, Director Inster is is in line ahead.
Are you mad at me, Chair? I thought the Chair's emails were for information. I'll take his advice under consideration in future. The, a couple of things on the remuneration. I think there's a broad consideration that we should all have in mind when we think of any changes. We have to ask ourselves, is this, based on what it pays, all directors, and I guess the world's are a little bit more, is this something that anybody could do based on the remuneration? We have to consider that now, considering about inflation and costs in our community. Could anybody do this role? That's something we should always consider. Sadly, government, I remember in Sea Shelt, when I first ran for election, I was lucky to make my job work with it. I think we made $3,500 a year in Sea Shelt at the time, I think it was $3,500. And it seemed to just be for a role for the retired. And things started to change when we started to look at it a little more closely, and things over 20, 25 years, things changed to be a little more doable. So let's, let's consider that, and hopefully, the argument I just gave is
we discuss around this remuneration review will have to come to a public meeting.
This is true, but... Director White. Oh, I beg your pardon, Director Inster is in line ahead.
Are you mad at me, Chair? I thought the Chair's emails were for information. I'll take his advice under consideration in future. The, a couple of things on the remuneration. I think there's a broad consideration that we should all have in mind when we think of any changes. We have to ask ourselves, is this, based on what it pays, all directors, and I guess the rurals are a little bit more, is this something that anybody could do, based on the remuneration? We have to consider that now, considering about inflation and costs in our community. Could anybody do this role? That's something we should always consider. Sadly, government, I remember in SeaShelt, when I first ran for election, I was lucky to make my job work with it. I think we made $3,500 a year in SeaShelt at the time, I think it was $3,500. And it seemed to just be for a role for the retired. And things started to change when we started to look at it a little more closely, and things over in 20, 25 years, things changed to be a little more doable. So let's consider that, and hopefully, the argument I just gave is a helpful one to those that want to look at that. I also never understand the difference between rural and municipal in terms of remuneration. And when I say that, I'm not saying that rural should be moved down. I'm saying that why wasn't municipal moved up to reflect the rural? It's not moved down, it's moved up. Thanks.
Director White.
Well, that happens to be in the last, the last report. So, I mean, I think maybe some of the, especially the incumbent directors bringing up the possibility, or the suggestion that maybe we don't need to do as intensive of a job this time. Part of that's probably because it was a really, really big job last time, really thorough report, and a lot of it, a lot of it stemmed back to recommendations about governance and how the role, it would really help for the role to be defined better, or, you know, the core role of a director. And there were some suggestions in there about that. I don't know if all the recommendations were really followed, in terms of kind of getting, the very top recommendations were, it would really help to have like a job description, basically, for municipal directors and rural directors, because they're different. And that would help to, so, and then, and I don't think that was done. I think there were, there were a lot of other things in there. And there were some really, not me, but I'll say the other people on that committee, because I was on it, had some really kind of sophisticated background and experience in HR, and studying compensation, and some of the metrics in there were probably really helpful. I think it might be worth considering just going back to that report, seeing if some of the data can be updated, just in terms of the metrics that were chosen on, you know, comparing different, different local governments and districts. And then looking at that, looking at that, the last report with data updated, and seeing what the board or committee thinks of that as a, for, in terms of guidance, rather than, yeah, redoing that all over again. But then, the question is, who does that? Is there staff that could do that, or would it be a committee of the board? Or how do we do that work? Is not something that I'm settled on in my head, how that would happen.
Yes. I'm thinking at the moment that we might form a subcommittee of the board to just go back and look at the previous report. And generally, I have not heard a lot of concerns raised by directors about this. This was a considerable change in compensation. It seems to have worked quite well. It has a built-in inflationary factor, so I don't think it needs a lot of attention, but we should go back and review the recommendations. I do remember that we wrote job descriptions. I'm not sure whether we passed them or not. So, Director White.
Well, I'd obviously be happy to go back, to be on that subcommittee, considering I'm so familiar with that report. And it'd be good to have a, you know, work with a couple others, and could also reach out to those other committee members, too, to just maybe give us some, for some support, but not put them on the committee, since I know them, I've worked with them before.
I'm going to check in with our CAO.
So what I'm hearing in the dialogue is, in the current policies, there's an envisionment of a separate committee that is formed. If you want that committee to be revisited, including the terms of reference, that would indicate a different makeup of that particular committee for this particular go-around, then we'd just like a motion for us to bring that back for your consideration, and then we can form the committee. We can provide some options related to that, because it sounds like we're not wanting to invite third-party public and do a call for that particular committee. So if the board wants us to come back with some options on a board-appointed committee with amendments to the current terms of reference, then we can bring that back for you, including some more information on what was done in the past.
That sounds pretty good to me. Would somebody like to move it? Director White. All right, are we clear that we have captured the wording of what we are doing in a review Okay, would you mind reading it back? Thank you.
That the committee of the whole recommend that the board review the terms of reference?
I think it was that staff bring back a recommendation about a review of the terms of reference. Options. Options. Options is good. Options for a review. Yes. Is that adequate, staff?
Noting that staff are not the ones making recommendations, maybe we can just assist with some of the, capturing some of the sentiment, which would be that staff bring back a subsequent report on options regarding revisions to the terms of reference for the director's remuneration review process, including background information on past recommendations, implementation, and options for future consideration.
That sounds really good. That's exactly what Director White said. Who's seconding that? Ah, and that is seconded. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? Ah, oh, Director Inster, I'm sorry.
The, I certainly have some critiques of the existing remuneration policy, and maybe that's because I didn't take ownership of the decision to make the changes a number of years ago. I'm not one of the owners. But I have a number of critiques, so I look forward to a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the question on this. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, that passes. Thank you very much. And we shall move forward to the always exciting water supply update.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm going to share my screen and see if it all works. Looks like it. On my side, three, two, one, there we go. Thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity to share again our water supply date for September 11th. I tend to have a picture on the front about Japen Lake or Advers Lake, and I thought I'm doing it a little bit different. This is staff cleaning out the intake by hand. It is the intake to the Japen Turban Plant, so the primary intake for the Japen Water System. And at the start of the season, that intake needs to be cleaned to make sure that it's actually able to capture the low flows in the creek. So that's what you're seeing here. In terms of the supply and demand, that's why is my computer not working? Yes, there we go. This is the, the blue bars are the community demand since we called stage two in July 11th. And the orange line is the temperature. And as usual, there is a, not entirely 1-1, but a pretty good relationship between temperature and, and demand in the community. And if you compare this to prior years, we're in the same ballpark, between, on average, 15, 16, 17. What's very common to see is that the first couple of days after we called stage two, the demand stays a little bit higher, and then it slows down a little bit. You can also see that August, on average, is a little bit lower than July. But what's the forecast between now and November? This is the latest graph from Environment Canada with the forecast for the upcoming three months, and the more red the color is, the higher the likelihood that temperature is above average. And as you can see, the green arrow is our area, Evcova Island, and it's on the brink of dark red. So there's a high likelihood that we have warmer than, that we continue to have warmer than normal temperatures for the upcoming months. Currently, we are stable, pretty stable weather already for weeks now, with about 20 degrees and relatively dry. Sometimes it's 19, sometimes 21. And there's no rain in the immediate forecast. This is a pattern that we recognized from several years ago, 2022. So keep that in mind for the rest of the presentation. Where were we in previous years on the same date? Sometimes we were in stage two. Last year, we also kept in stage two for the entire summer, and the years prior, we were in stage four. So it's pretty comparable with earlier years, but it totally depends on what the rain will do in upcoming weeks, to see if we can actually reduce some restrictions or not. As I said, because there is no rain in the forecast for now, we'll stay in stage two for the Japen and South Pender Systems for the, until a significant amount of rain is actually confirmed. It's not somewhere in two weeks on the, in the forecast, and then it always disappears again. Eastbourne, this year, we're staying at stage three. In previous years, we had to go to stage four, so even the fact that we had to stay in stage three there is a bonus. And all other water systems, they just stay in stage one as they currently are. Some good news on the leak resolution front. This slide is only data related to our recent installations in SeaShelt. Last year, we identified five major leaks, and this year, four. And a total of 433,000 liters a day was saved only by resolving those nine large leaks, which were 2.5% of the average demand stage two. So nine leaks, 2.5%, which is huge, huge amount. About 93, as of today, I think we can say 94, 95. 5% of the water meters are installed now in the SeaShelt area, and the rest is coming in upcoming months. And we've been able to do a first read of the installed meters last Friday, which was a huge milestone for staff. Based on preliminary indication of the review of this data, we suspected there might be about 500 leaks within the SeaShelt area, and there might be a phased approach of informing the residents about the leaks. Focus on the larger leaks first, and then do the rest. And there are already 300 people on the waitlist to receive their monthly water use updates. And those people will get their first ones based on their October reads. So this is good news. For the rest of the area, for the electric areas, in July, we sent close to 400 leak letters, and for a lot of those properties, we never hear back if a leak is resolved or not. So it's really requesting voluntary compliance. The larger ones, we sent eight shut-off letters in August, totaling 190 liters a day. Seven of those are resolved, and one is outstanding. And we hope to conclude that one shortly. And four properties in electric areas are permanently, at this point, shut off indefinitely, and those are all vacant homes. To date, in 2025, we sent off, sent out 36 shut-off notices to properties on the Japen system, and that resulted in saving of 6.5% of the demand. For Ackment, we had to send off, shut off one connection, but that was a big one, and that really drained our system, because it was 19.4% of the total data demand of the system. South Pender, six properties, 7.2%, and North Pender, two properties, 3.8%. So I think it's clear from this data that this work that we're, the staff is undertaking is very effective in dealing with larger leaks, because the only shut-offs that are currently in place are for actual vacant properties, and where residents are just, where the owners are just not acting at this point in time, until they might sell the property, or they're just not developing it. But all the other letters that we've sent out ultimately resulted in the leaks being resolved. So we're extremely happy with those results. And as always, for the information about water supply and water conservation regulations can be found on this page on our website. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sure. I was just going to ask, the number of potential leaks you found in SeaShelt is what percentage of the connections?
About 11, and that's actually lower than we expected, so that's good news.
That's good news. Wow. And do we have any further questions? Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Not actually a question, just a comment. I want to say thank you to staff for putting this together. I've already shared it out to our community associations, so that they can send it out to their membership. It's funny, we knew that meters were coming to SeaShelt for years, years and years, and it never actually dawned on me to put myself on the waiting list for the water updates. So I, you know, having just gone through that form on our website, it's also quite easy to do. And so if you're not signed up to receive notifications, it's literally four form fields to fill out, and away you go. So thank you to staff, and thank you for the update, and look forward to seeing more on the leak resolution front in SeaShelt as we get more data. Thanks.
Thank you. It has been a long time coming, and it's exciting to finally be getting there. Amazing. Just, just another follow-up on the leak question. There are fewer leaks than you expected, but the big ones were whoppers. So as a percentage, is the amount of leaking in the system roughly what you were expecting?
Thanks for the question, Ed. The actual amount of water that's being, currently being leaked by those 500 properties, about 500 properties, can only be confirmed next month after we've done two readings. So we'll have to await for the results of those readings and the data analysis to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last chance, folks. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if either staff or some of the directors who might have been present could comment on any of the engagement that happened this summer? I think particularly, I think in Pender, there was some engagement around volumetric billing. Any kind of initial thoughts on how that went? Love to hear how that went.
Right. Volumetric billing, I just had an inquiry about that yesterday, and pointed them to the mock bill on our website. Staff.
Thank you for the question. Yes, staff were in Pender, you know, in August, early August, and in response, in order to follow up of the first mock bills being sent out. Overall, well onsite, and also on the phones and through email. Yes, we received some questions from residents, but overall, the number of questions that we received was relatively low, and we were able to answer all the questions that were asked to us. So I think overall, the communication and the outreach that has been performed went well, and we haven't, yeah, and it had, it highlighted some, some items where we need to do some further work with individual properties, and that's, that's what we're hoping for to get right now, instead of when we're actually sending out the real bills.
and that's what we're hoping for to get right now instead of when we're actually sending out the real bills. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So that looks like we have got to the end of the exciting water supply update. Next up on the agenda is communications. We have a letter from the Pickleball Association. I will note that we do not generally make motions at board or committee on the basis of delegations. Right, but communications can be different depending on the situation. It's been a whole month since I've been here. I forget what I'm doing. So do any of the board members have questions or comments on the communication on the agenda? Ah, Director Backs, nice to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see you too. So in this letter, they ask for some guidance on how to go about doing zoning change to satisfy their requirements. I asked that if staff undertakes communications with them, that I be included in the, because I'm the director for the area that they're talking about, I'd like to be included in the conversation.
Thank you. That sounds quite reasonable. And I was wondering if there was any follow-up with the District of Seashell on the potential for a pickleball location by the Sunshine Coast Arena?
Well, yeah, okay. Well, I thought the group was going to be talking to that group over the last month. I've looked at some things, some contracts, and yeah, I was disappointed about one. A contract the D O S did, but I wasn't there. I wasn't there. So yeah, I know it's vague, Chair, but it's in reference to the questions, the stuff I pointed out to them. But my view is it would be interesting if we could ever say, see a, just because of the availability of land, I keep talking about that as unused land, is to see a, because things have changed. We built the Hackett, we redid with recognition of an individual passed away in the community as well liked. We redid the Hackett Courts a number of years ago, tennis courts. And it was a big deal to those, there was like 50 people that came to have them resurfaced and redone for two tennis courts. And obviously, there was a decline in the use. And so it was redone to add pickleball. I think there's two courts there, and then one. And they seem to be better used than tennis on a regular basis. So it's an argument for the change in use sometimes that we should be talking about. So that having been said, in that particular case, my thought going forward is that maybe one day we can see the Sunshine Coast Tennis and Pickleball Club up near the Seashell Arena. Yeah, so I just think that maybe with two groups driving some sort of change or indoor addition, it might work where you'd have a larger facility covered. That's just my thought. Because, Madam Chair, when those facilities came along a number of years ago and when those proponents came to us, at that point, because tennis was big, I pushed for us to work with those groups to provide those facilities. I always do push for rec facilities. That's why we have two fields at Kinnick-Nick now. So I'm certainly supportive of groups working together to provide more recreational opportunities for our population. Look how healthy these three guys look. I mean, wouldn't you want pickleball?
Thank you. Although I believe that we're looking, or the pickleballer, are looking for an indoor facility so it can run all year round. I'm just going to point out that right now, we are lumbered with four recreation facilities that were built in separate locations. And it is really expensive to maintain four separate sites. Most communities attempt to build, for instance, their swimming pool next to their ice rink so that they can share heat exchange and they can share administration and maintenance and everything else. And we instead have four separate locations. So adding a fifth location on top of that situation, I think, might be unwise. And we should look as much as we can to centralize the recreation facilities that we're building. Anything further from... Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Just back to the letter itself. I don't believe that we need to make any sort of a motion here because if they're talking about specific properties and what processes might look like, I think that is just a direct, their group-to-staff conversation. I don't think that's something that we need to get involved in. So just looking over to staff for confirmation because it seems rather procedural.
Yes. Over to staff for the appropriate next steps in a user group in exploring new facilities. Corporate officer.
I'll just speak to the legislative part of that. So if board would like to direct staff, a resolution, a recommendation would be required if there is specific direction to staff to do further work.
As was mentioned earlier, I believe there is a review of our recreation facilities on the books for, is it next year? Jim Ganyan? So it would be appropriate to include pickleball as one of the, you know, demands in the community as part of, that's in scope for that review then?
Thank you, Chair. In scope is indoor recreation facility needs assessment. So there would be public engagement. We'd be looking for what are the demands in the community that would inform recommendations that might come out. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't think we need to do any further on this at this moment because there is no action to be taken and it's in scope for something that's in the work plan at the moment. Okay. We have no further items on this agenda, but we do have an in-camera agenda. I have been on vacation for six weeks, and my brain has gone to lunch. Right, motion to go in camera and then questions. So we have, oh, it's not there. Where's? It's on the cover. The wording of this thing, sorry. Call to order, agenda.
Chair, I will move that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91-K of the community charter.
All in favor? Thank you, that passes. Any public questions at this point? Hearing none? Do you want to ask the public question?
Thank you. Director Toth?
Thank you. The correspondence that we have on our agenda package says in the presentation we identified two specific locations in Roberts Creek that from a coast wide perspective are ideal locations but lack the proper zoning. And during that presentation, one of the properties that was identified was a private parcel that's currently for sale, which the SCRD has no role in. And so the correspondence that we received is what we were discussing today. So from that perspective, it doesn't mention anything in there about a park lease. So it's something that we can definitely have a conversation around. But in terms of the actions that are actually asked for in the letter, basically asking for what the next steps are to look at rezoning property, which is an operational issue.
Sure, as long as it's not too long. Yes, I saw it. Okay, thank you. I think probably you need to move forward in conversation with the area D director in part. This is the third proposal for that land that I've heard this term. So it's obviously in people's sight as a potential location for a lot of different things. So I'm going to call this to a close because we've got an in camera agenda and we have to get to it.
That being said, I had not seen your email.
So thank you. Okay, thank you. I think probably you need to move forward in conversation with the area D director in part. This is the third proposal for that land that I've heard this term. So it's obviously in people's sight as a potential location for a lot of different things. So I'm going to call this to a close because we've got an in camera agenda and we have to get to it.
That being said, I had not seen your email.
So thank you. Okay, thank you. I think probably you need to move forward in conversation with the area D director in part. This is the third proposal for that land that I've heard this term. So it's obviously in people's sight as a potential location for a lot of different things. So I'm going to call this to a close because we've got an in camera agenda and we have to get to it.
Welcome back to the committee of the whole meeting of September 11, 2025. We have finished our agenda. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Moved. Seconded. All in favor? Thank you very much everyone. We are adjourned.